We will get started, call the meeting to order. First on the list is to adopt the agenda, and there is one change in Ellen's report, there's an annual report item, and we're gonna move that to new business and make it an actual loaded action item.
Under agenda format.
Under agenda format, annual report is what we'll put that on. Right before we get to the reports, so called annual report. Any other changes that you know of? Alright. I'll adopt, take a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have Bailey Boar here to do the vision statement and mission statement.
Bailey is an eighth grader, and her parent is Brittany Kenyon. She has two siblings, Rain and Sky Kenyon. Her favorite subject is science, and under interests and hobbies, I'm going to read her verbatim because I think it speaks to Bailey's amazing personality. My interests and hobbies are shooting sports, softball, basketball, walking with my mom or grandma, sleeping, teaching my sisters valuable life lessons, telling kids stories on the bus, mini golf, regular golf, knitting, melty beads, baking with Noel, praying, giving family a hard time, going down waterside, spending time with my family, taking nighttime showers, comparing my grades with Amanda, telling my sisters I told you so, watching my sisters get roasted by my parents, sledding, snowboarding, listening to music, meeting my sisters at anything, skateboarding, and making people smile.
Oh man, we should hang up sometime.
That was good.
That was good.
Alright Bailey.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I stand up? No, they got to. I'm already good at this. Okay, dual school mission statement, Emily's mission statement, empower students to become independent learners, personally accountable and responsible citizens. Billy's statement, dual school district believes everyone in the community contributes to education of the children in our schools. Therefore, we are committed to personal responsibility and accountability, respecting others and retaining an open line of communication in the district, providing opportunities and resources for individuals to fess, and maintaining and communicating high academic and professional standards.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you Bailey.
Thank you. And next on the list, we have public comments and visitors. Hannah Swenson is here first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just came to kind of explain my role and what that looks like right now, and I'm sure it'll change a million times this year. I'm special ed director, 504 coordinator, and testing coordinator eventually. This is my ninth year in education. I oversee, or I help oversee, I guess, five special ed teachers here at the district, and then fourteen paraprofessionals that work in the special ed setting. Our numbers, we have ninety-eight if I did the math correctly today, that's received special education services in our district, and we have fifteen students that are on 504 plans. I think the main goal is just to make sure that we have collaboration and inclusion happening in our district, and making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of those learners and their individual, unique needs that come with those things. Some things that I'm currently working on is our sped forms platform. In the past, we've used Infinite Campus, and the co-op has moved to sped forms this year. So, we are learning an all-new system, and there has been lots of kinks in the process, but I have to give kudos to our staff because they dove right into it, and have done really well at communicating the needs that we need still there, so.
It's kind of in the outline of what I've been working on so far.
Is it just a new program?
Like software?
New software program, yep, how we do our reporting.
Can you say we have ninety-five?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight in special education, and fifteen on 504 plans.
And 504 is?
504 plans are those that receive accommodations in our district, so they don't receive special ed services, but they receive accommodations based on their disability.
And every student under those, the ninety-eight and fifteen, you meet with the parents regularly and you meet with the teachers regularly, so that's all I work in love with.
Lots of meetings for sure.
And so do you already have like one set done of meetings with all the parents now the school started?
So, it depends on the kid's annual IEP or 504 date, so it's actually scattered throughout the entire year, but I think we have probably twelve scheduled for this month, so we're getting through them.
It's probably only about a hundred and all, no?
You gotta have one a year.
Yep, have to have one a year, yep.
Awesome. And then I suppose you already knew probably all the teachers and the parents, they didn't know them a little bit?
Yeah, pretty much, all familiar faces.
Good. Well, thanks for doing that review with us.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay, move on. Any conflict of interest disclosures? Done?
No.
The next thing is the consent agenda items, and then we'll take a motion to approve. One of the minutes from August eleventh, and August twenty, twenty-five payroll, take a motion to approve those.
Motion?
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, not old business, so move to new business. One, the first one is the financial report for month ending August thirty-one, and that starts on page eight. Any questions or comments? Now, take a motion when you're ready. The payables are positive, that's a negative. Here we go. Take a motion?
Hold on, you want to get a question?
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next are the August bills, starting on page fourteen. I did send Ellen a few questions of my own ahead of time, I was gonna want to just review those first, and then get your other questions.
I didn't know it was one, I think. Out of town was one of them, but yeah, I think that's, I mean, looking back, the last, I think, four months was like around that seven, eight thousand dollars, so hopefully that's evened out now, and we're getting billed how we should, and that's what it'll be. I assume during the winter, it'll probably be a little more with all the heating, yep, that we have, so hopefully that one now is.
Consistent.
Yeah, consistent where it needs to be. Pioneer Athletics was one, yeah, and that supplies, and that would just paint, so it can't be capitalized.
Oh, okay.
Because it's paint.
Which ones are?
Pioneer Athletics.
It's on page fifteen.
Yeah, page fifteen.
And then dual transportation, what did they transport? Who did they buy?
They may have done some training for us.
They did training, yes.
Yep, where'd you see that?
Somewhere halfway down on page fourteen.
Okay.
Three thousand dollars.
And I think that has to do with getting certified for their CDLs.
Yeah, that's CDO.
There's some training that has to be done.
And if you're, we got ninety thousand, that's just for supplies, or is nothing in there, a machine or anything?
No, no, but also lies, probably just because of the school you're starting, that they're, yeah.
Or there's wheels to the lighter one. Oh, it's eight thousand dollars.
It was lights at the bus barn, and lights.
Most of it's bus.
Was bus barn, yeah.
All the lights to the bus.
Yeah.
There was a couple.
Yeah.
I think there was a couple of them, but it was mainly the bus barn.
Yeah, that's all that. Is that capitalized or not?
The lights?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why it's capitalized.
Do you want to speak to any others in capital like, like Lego education? That's cool.
That's for the, and that's six grand.
Well, the STEM.
Yeah, STEM stuff.
I guess like the stuff's for.
Yep.
That was just the last one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's new.
So what is?
Their kits for.
Science, technology.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not like thirty, thirty kits of Legos, huh?
Pretty much. Pretty much.
Legos has a lot to do with it.
It's robotics.
Yeah. Robots, probably engines.
Yeah. So ahead.
Any other? Question? Okay, proof of bills.
So move.
Second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the resignation of Brooke Copcat to approve.
Yep, we missed Brooke's resignation last month, so obviously it's on this month, so with that, I want to thank her for her years of service that she put in at the district, and good luck in her future endeavors.
So move.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hire of Billy Joe Geisel as the assistant varsity track coach.
Billy resigned her middle school position, she was actually volunteering at the high school position, so we are adding a coach here. We've got sixty kids in track last year, so we were short on bodies, so she's basically assuming her role again, like getting paid for it, so definitely a need there.
Got to make a motion to do that.
Okay. Second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hire of Tyler Urban as custodian.
Yep, Tyler started about two weeks ago with us, and he's working full-time and running around, he's done a wonderful job so far, so he's a good hire.
Is he like days, evenings?
He's working eight to six, four days a week, and then he's gonna be working some games as we go on in the evenings.
Say hi in some time.
Yep.
He's actually still here, you saw him walk by.
Really?
He just walked by, yeah.
Okay, take a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hire of Mackenzie Cold for prom advisor.
Yes, Mackenzie actually did some of this, I think, last year with Brooke was on maternity leave, so I threw it out on an email, and she was, she took it, so, and she's excited about it, so.
I know this person.
Yeah, I'm glad she took it.
Awesome, she'll do amazing.
Sure.
Alright, take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, Leo's got it.
It isn't really, is it?
Second.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll go through the open enrollments, so we're gonna approve for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight open enrollments, and that's all we've been through, so move to the district.
That'll get us up to what?
I will go through that in my report.
Okay. And, and, and comments on these, where they're coming from as a whole?
Uh.
Completely unexpected, or?
No, not for the, not for the most part.
Were they here last year?
Here and there, no. Actually, two or more, but I didn't have papers for, but most of them were just standalone from neighboring districts, so, no influx from one particular district.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Roll second.
Okay, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next thing on the list is to discuss the agenda format. So, uh, so, N E S C board, there's a packet that Ellen's put together, some examples of agendas that start with N E S C, and Wade highlighted that their agenda gives a little bit more information on when there's like a hire or approval of hires, so number seven, if you see, that's an example, and wondering if we should have more context in our agendas to kind of give a little bit more info. And really, the, the main one I was thinking would be helpful for, was for hires, so like, what's their contract hours or their salary, and then maybe just one-offs, see if there's a need for more information. And so Ellen provided some examples, some, some provide nothing, some provide just a narrative, and some, some provide a little bit of detail, but I think it'd be nice just to add the, for sure for the hires, the salary and the contract, if they're full-time or part-time, whatever the scenario is. Did you have other examples where you'd want to see more, Wade, than you have seen in the past?
I guess that was the main one. I, I just think, from the standpoint, you know, where somebody could see the post of the agenda, how would they know if they have any interest in coming to the meeting?
What are we talking about?
Yeah, like, you know, what is, you know, just a couple of words, you may not, you may not know, I mean, so, I guess with, using judgment, I guess, if, if you think a slight description would help, maybe give some more visibility to somebody who has interest in, you know, outside public, I mean, just looking in, we may even have a pretty good idea, because we talked about it in a previous meeting, or something, what that line item is, but anybody looking in may not know what it's about, but I'm not asking for, like what we used to do, that's an extensive process, but just, just a thought.
Yeah.
But I, I do think maybe on the new hires, a little bit of detail would be good here for around payment and lengthy contract.
Yeah, we usually talk about a meeting anyway, but for someone for this hanging on the wall, it's very important.
It is nice too, that if it's listed in the agenda, we don't have to like write it down, too, or three times. There was a note though, that we won't disclose, kind of private info, like there was a cover of maternity leave, we won't say those kind of things on the public agenda.
Like on the N E S C, when she has maternity.
Yeah, so Ellen saw that on there.
That shouldn't have been on there.
So we'll leave those kind of confidential things off that, but.
I guess the third one that I, or like the last page of it, I look at two files, and it's like, all their stuff is in consent agenda, they're.
They're approving all that.
They're approving consent agenda, they don't, they don't discuss any of it, it's all consent agenda.
I don't think we're ready for that.
Well, I have a order, you just call and say, I vote for everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of them.
So there, there has to be a discussion somewhere, I mean, I don't know if we, is that, is that how they do their, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, good question, I don't know.
Yeah.
How do you learn more unless you have to disclose in another way?
Yeah.
Like email or something?
Oh, we're a long ways from two calls.
I mean, I think they still have their packet of information.
Sure. Yeah, so that was just more discussion, and we'll just, actually, I don't know, just a suggestion and see what everybody else thinks?
Yeah.
Okay, so no approval of that, we'll just kind of look through the agenda and watch for that, and then the next one was the annual report, and Ellen provided us.
Yeah, provided some documents, I did do the whole annual report, the annual report is probably over a hundred pages, and I know we provided it in the past, but I don't think there's anybody that might look at the entire thing, I mean, it's.
Well, with that, when we come to the meeting, we want to have it read.
You what?
We have read that and through, and then we come to the meeting.
Yeah, then you don't have any questions, right? Because you read the whole thing?
Yeah. Why didn't we read all that?
Right, right.
So I put here, well, I just put that it was reviewed and, and bar complete by the office in, yeah, State.
Department of Education?
Yeah, Department of Education. And then just the, so each fund, the funds are, for general capital, special education, capital projects, food service, other enterprise funds, and that is driver's ed, and now this year will be also preschool, is in that. And then the monthly cash balances for general capital, like social education, and then the teacher compensation.
Yeah, these were reports that Ellen had found that other schools provide, or the business managers.
Yeah, there's a business manager that said this, he's like, this is what I provide to our board, instead of the whole report. I mean, there are a bunch of other reports out there, but some are just pages and pages, I mean, like every expense, or should say every expense, but every account number, yeah, has, there's a huge report for revenue, same thing.
The only thing I'm seeing is the social security number, I know it's texted out, but it's even the last four, I don't think it's over there, do you have that published anywhere? Or published in, for the teacher compensation, maybe like black logo somehow, is that published? I know it's only four digits.
Yeah, but it doesn't get published anywhere.
In our minutes or anything, or in our, but it doesn't.
Just saying that it's been.
Oh, okay, so we got.
But it's, it just has to be approved, has to be, yeah, it just has to be approved by the, by the board.
And really, us approving is just saying, hey, got done, there's no like.
The DOE ultimately approves.
Exactly, there's nothing for us to really approve, just that it got done.
But codified law says that the board has to approve annual report.
That's why we have it on the agenda, because of what we're supposed to have to.
Is there anything here you want to point out, or is it just a bunch of?
Is there anything that really has, oh, what?
Can you watch out for anything like that, or anything like that?
Did you use all by yourself this year? Did you have?
Yep.
Helped by others? I feel like that's like a win. Celebrate!
I know. It takes days, only get pull, they do all the information, and yeah, it's, yeah, then you find errors, or you know, stuff that doesn't.
Match up.
Like account numbers that don't roll into the record how they're supposed to, and yeah.
Yeah, good job.
So, yeah, did it by myself. I didn't text Lane once, because.
Yeah, you were, awesome. No way to go. Any questions from you all? Standard stuff. Alright, well, I'll take a motion to approve the annual report.
I have a motion to approve the annual report.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, next on to the reports, Mr. Scherbeck.
Yep, I've got a separate handout as well. Take a look at the, the first one, see the rest one. I told you, we're gonna talk about what we're charging to Doolbrook, is the whole totally separate handout?
Yeah, just.
Oh, sorry. So I've got three years of data here, rough, roughly, and I'll explain it to you, from twenty-two to all the way up until last year, I should say, twenty-four, twenty-five there.
Oh, yeah.
Our coaches, that, that, that particular line is, is pretty much stays at, that's a static expense every year, with the exception that if they move, move lanes. The second item on all three of these, this includes entry fees, officials, that we have to pay for home meets, state wrestling costs, which includes transportation on that, and then all capital outlay expenses. And you'll notice, for instance, from twenty-three to twenty-four, in twenty-three, it was a little over six thousand, and in twenty-three, twenty-four, it was over fifteen. The biggest change in that was, well, that's the year we bought same-let's and jackets and uniforms, so that added to that cost, and we're on a five-year rotation for that. Another variable would be mats, which we bought, we got fairly new mats, but we probably won't need them for another five to ten years, and those are a big expenditure. Transportation, we don't track transportation costs for each specific sport, but I figured, you know, most years, we are lucky to have one home meet for wrestling, so we're traveling. With the number of teams now, and not wanting to see the same teams, we're traveling some pretty good distances, so taking that into consideration, by the time we pay a bus driver, miles, gas, everything, we're looking at probably that five thousand dollar range, and again, that's, that's a guess on that, so.
If we always drive, Doolbrook doesn't.
No, we, yeah, part of our co-op right now is that we drive, so we don't do anything, they, it's their job to get here. So on average, you know, you're looking at around twenty-five thousand dollars probably per year to run that particular program. According to last year's roster, they had four out of our sixteen kids were from Doolbrook. Now, I don't have any other data from the prior years, but I would say that's probably been typical, that we have at most, probably a handful of kids. So in looking at that, I just threw this out, this is just a point to, to talk, if we're gonna stay consistent with our gymnastics program, and looking at fifteen hundred dollars per participant, it would be my suggestion that we do a flat rate of fifteen hundred, and then we would cap it at four wrestlers, so if they have five or six, they'll just get a little bit better deal. To me, and, and, and just looking at that, that's roughly twenty to twenty-five percent of what the program costs, so I don't think that's out of line, but at the same time, I'm open to discussion, but this is what I, I thought, I mean, you guys have seen a number of co-op agreements where they split costs, and then they're diving through numbers at the end of the year, I just think this would be clear-cut, business managers don't have to spend time dissecting stuff, and in the end, it's a five hundred dollar difference anyways, so, that's, that's my two cents, and I'm open for questions or any other ideas.
Was the gymnastics student price the same?
Student price is the same.
Can make sense to be consistent. And when you do the math, do I end up by how many wrestlers there are, that's, it's like sixteen, but that's, around number would be good.
Yeah.
Does Doolbrook know what you think about?
I put a bug in there, superintendent in there, athletic graphics here, I had a discussion with them, I just told them, we're looking at doing something different, I just talked to their superintendent last week, and just kind of explained to them, I'm kind of looking at doing something like this, so I will shoot this to him tomorrow and see where they land, so, to me, this is fair.
I don't want, I mean, I just hopefully stay in the program.
I do too, I don't want it to be a deterrent for them, and to be honest with you, I think this is, I think it's fair, I really do think it's fair.
Yeah, they've gotten several years.
Yeah.
Doing it for nothing, right?
Yeah, well, five hundred dollars.
Five hundred bucks.
Oh, what's five hundred?
I mean, that's not a lot, but.
Per, per kid?
No, just like five hundred dollar flat fee, so.
But it will be a substantial increase, a change this year, so.
So, I'll share that with them, and my guess is they'll take it to their board in October or so.
Is it send this to them?
Yeah, I'd more like to send them that document.
Do you think this would be, like, I mean, we would do this every year, like at this time, and then we would kind of re, replace the numbers?
We can, we can.
I mean, let's say, let's say they go to seven kids or whatever, well then maybe next year, we base it on seven, or, I don't know how you, because that would be retro, I mean, but then.
Yeah, we certainly could.
But I mean, yeah, we gotta do it now, and I imagine that you have to do it for.
For November, yeah.
Because that might be something to mention to them, too, just so they kind of, you know, this will be kind of looked at every year, just to see what the numbers are. Well, then you probably put in there a stipulation to be agreed on every year.
Or reviewed annually.
Yeah.
Alright, my second bullet item there is a student count, which is on our second page. This is where we currently sit as of today, we are at four hundred and ninety-nine students, so we are down twenty-four students this year. You know, and one of the, one of the things that, that people have asked is, okay, why are, why are we down that many? Take a look at your next page, some of this ties into it, your next page, I track this pretty closely, these are the number of open enrollments in, I've got them highlighted here, and the number of open enrollment kids out of our district, and then as well as the number of students that homeschool in our district, so, in looking at one of the major contributors to us being down this many, we had just as many kindergarten kids coming in this year as we did graduates last year, so that's basically a wash, but we have a number of large families that moved out of the district this year, we've got probably three or four families of three or more kids that moved out, and simply relocated, not even to neighboring districts, but far, far away, so that, that's a huge part of it, and then we had some one-offs, we had a couple of students go online, we had a couple of students homeschool, those one-offs kind of add up, and that's kind of, that's where we're at. I wish I could sit here and pinpoint and say, okay, it's, it's because of this, it's because of that, it's, it's just the culmination of, of most of it being large families moving out. With that, we had nineteen kids, new students moved into dual this year, and then again, we had twenty-six go out, so there's a, there's quite a, a difference there, so.
Pay here for the ones going out, pay here for the ones going out.
It's across the...
So you're finding that one kid in the family goes here, they help it?
They all, yeah, that's what the case this year was, most of them. It's the whole family.
Dubrook did six of ours, and we did twelve of theirs.
Yeah, we're winning that, though.
All that works.
If you look at the open enrollment, Alex, our CAMB numbers have always been high. In all honesty, and I don't keep historical data of this, because it's a working document, but this is probably the lowest number that we have had over the years going out to CAMB, which is, which is good. But still, we've got, we had that, and the homeschoolers up, we're, we're looking at over a hundred kids.
Watertown's pretty high, just because that's where a lot of, like, the...
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of it's location, so we lose a lot of kids, obviously, to, to CAMB that live in the Gary area, or they're on Lake Cochran. We lose a lot of kids to Watertown that live in the Goodwin area, uh, just because of proximity, so... It's good to have a large district, but at the same time, when they're closer to another one, it can hurt you.
So, refresh my memory on this deal, so this, first date, this will have the first date for...
For next year.
The following.
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So keep in mind, our count to date is the last Friday in September. And I have updated this five times since the start of school already. So we've gone from, I think, five oh three down to four ninety-nine, and it could be back up to five oh six here. Next week, we don't, we don't know.
So next week you give us the final?
Yeah, I'll give you the, the final word, our child count is.
JK, is that always low?
It is, because they're, you know, the majority of those kids go from preschool to kindergarten, but there's always between eight and fifteen.
They're like always on the summer month birthdays, a lot of times, or at least making...
And bonus, yep.
And then, is JK part of the count, and JK isn't?
Yes, JK is a, right, exactly. JK is a part of the count. So, that's just some, just some numbers to digest for you. Next item here, uh, state of the district, we had talked about that, uh, last month, I am more than willing to do that. I will do, put that together again in November, uh, which is when I did it last year. I did it in November last year because our, uh, state assessment numbers come out in October. So I'll put that in there to have some comparative data for, for people to take a look at. Alice training, we've got Alice training this Friday. Uh, Alice training is our lockdown, lockout situation, and what to do in the event of an active shooter. I am working with the sheriff's office to come in and do a short overview of that. Not only for the staff that have been here, but for the new staff, and hand out, uh, a new protocol sheet for everybody, and then just talk about our protocol. And ways to improve it after having gone through that last year, so, um, always improving and making sure we're, we're on top of that. Uh, I have some MWA's, uh, training scheduled, again, uh, for some new users, some, our teachers that just need a basic overview, which will be virtual. And then I have somebody coming onsite in October to go over some, uh, growth. We're doing it, and making sure we've got the, got our questions answered. Get our hands on the data. Uh, last thing is the staff photo book, and I forgot to bring them here.
I was just looking around.
I was, I was gonna hand them out, I had them all printed out. Uh, I sent that to you guys, uh, Michelle had put that together, and it looks absolutely wonderful. We made a few changes, got some new faces in there. I had her run off thirty copies, so we can put them at the, put them at the door, hand them out, so people can see, um, who's who, because even though we're a small school, when you're at opposite ends of the building, you don't necessarily know who everybody is. So it's just a nice visual for everybody to see, and I'm thanking, uh, Michelle for, for doing that.
That was awesome, by the way.
Yeah, it looks, it looks good. So, um, I'll have more to talk about our CSI, we actually had a quick meeting today, which I'll recap. It was a meeting I scheduled at the end of last week, uh, product that they're selling, so, um, we'll explain that in October. Upcoming events, obviously, our next board meeting is the fourteenth, and then I scheduled all of our focus group meetings, um, scheduled them out throughout the year. And I've got about four or five new people on those. The other meetings that I need to set up, uh, would be with Tony and Leah, and that's our academic meeting. And I'll more than likely be doing that in November, so I'll give you guys a good month ahead of time, so you can find out what dates work. That's kind of downtime, and kind of downtime in between seasons, so...
The fourth day should be the thirteenth, should be.
Am I off a day?
That's my calendar. Do you have the calendar out, yeah?
October twenty-five, fourteenth is the Tuesday.
It's the thirteenth, yeah.
Yep.
That's the first mistake I made this week.
Ever.
Is he the one who gets it? Yeah, there's a fat chance that I do want to catch it, because I don't, I don't break it down to you.
Yeah, you're right.
Thirteenth, it's on this day, for Dana, Larry, and Holly, whichever one you have, sir.
Yeah, you can follow on that.
Alright, that's all I got.
Um, and then we got Joel, you and I and Ellen should schedule a finance committee at some point, but we don't have to do that right now.
Top, which is what?
Just intro the, like, maybe, pretty much, yeah.
I'd like to have the top of it.
Well, yeah, that too, yeah. So we'll have to figure that later, if we don't do that. Okay.
So what does that mean, you want to just, when you say you want to stay the one, what do you want? What, what are you thinking?
I'll let you guys figure it out.
Yeah, I'll text you and give you options, how about that? I'll work with Ellen to narrow that.
But you're thinking in October or September, that's those longer?
Probably October.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm trying to move program, um, a new way of disseminating information to my staff. I'm using Snore this year, which is an educational newsletter template. And other than, some of the teachers somehow can't see the graphics, just because it's apparently not a trusted sender for the state of South Dakota. Um, it's been really nice, it's a really easy way of getting information out, and then you can track analytics and everything, so that would be kind of a neat thing to look at for teachers to be able to use in their classrooms as newsletters too. Um, NWEA testing is underway, uh, we have Homecoming coming up very, very soon. Hit play on Homecoming is the theme. It starts off on the fourteenth with Painting the Streets, and then five o'clock is Fan Fest, and then seven PM is Coronation with MCs Gavin Mayland and Camden Peterides. Um, there we will celebrate the court and name a homecoming king and queen. The court is Troy Jensen, Oliver Fever, Jason Almer, and Moen Bubroot. And then Lacey Anderson, Riley Bass, Grayson Gearing, and Addison Timmons. And then supporting our court are the class attendants, our freshman Emma Rammel and Bentley Fockin. Uh, sophomores Olivia Fever and Kenton Timmons, and then juniors Brailleyn Krieger and Sutton Bank. And then on Friday, we have our parade at one, and then the pep rally follows that, and then game at seven, and then fun dance to end the week.
After our big three on Friday, then, who do we play?
Roll, roll. And then I wanted to take a moment and publicly, publicly recognize Cindy Kornald. Mrs. Kornald just does an amazing job of truly seeing her students and being able to identify students who might need a little extra help. Uh, she seeks them out, she makes sure that they're coming to her during study house for that help. She does a great job with communicating with parents, communicating with me if there's any other classroom concerns that she needs help with. She just does an amazing job. She asks really good questions, and then she's involved in other committees, you know, looking at data and all of that. A group of our seniors came and spoke to me about doing a service project, and these are the seniors that we recognized in August as doing the leadership camp through Humanity Launch. They proposed doing an elementary snack drive, because we have some students who don't always have snacks with them, and uh, our elementary teachers do an amazing job of providing snacks, but this will take some of that off of the teachers, uh, by asking for donations.
Our business manager provides a lot of snacks too.
And high schoolers. She needs a little fun drive.
I know, we have a lot of snacks going in and out of the high school, middle school office as well. Um, so they are putting together a snack drive and asking for donations, so those students are Miles Decker, Preston Rounds, Malika Moskovich, Ella Kirkley, Amber Slack, Brady Boyle, and Sienna Martinell. So you'll see flyers up, uh, we'll post it on Facebook, we're looking at different ways of getting these snacks donated. We've found a place to store them, and then we'll disseminate them throughout the year.
Great, I love that.
And then I just wanted to highlight two students that have had cool things happen to them over the summer. Sonia Sodran went on the Ambassador's music trip, so she played her clarinet through a bunch of different countries in Europe. I had her write up a little summary for me, so I'm going to put that on the Facebook page. I know she worked really hard to audition for that, and um, did a lot of her own fundraising to be able to go to that, and she spent about two weeks over there. And then Tatum Saether won, he was nominated to compete for the Thermal Fisher Scientific Innovators Challenge, um, which was among, I would like, two thousand students, and it was because of his performance at our local science fair.
Oh, thanks for the highlight, I love it. No questions?
Yeah, what was his science project? And what grade is he?
He is a current freshman.
That's what he was named for last year.
Yeah.
What was his project, do you remember?
I don't remember.
I'm trying to think, we judged it.
The email, the email piece, honestly.
I don't know, I can't judge all of them. Still, one of the grades, but I don't remember.
I think it said in the Facebook post, but it wasn't very...
The Vikings are coming up, maybe shut up.
Alright, Mr. Rill, if you're on the...
Alright, I'm gonna start with staff recognition, I'd just like to recognize Mr. Shane Weichel. He's done a phenomenal job getting the art room going. Spent hours here prior, and very little short notice, and very late hire in the process. Just, I've stopped in there a few different times, and kids are all engaged, they are active, they're, they're, some of them are doing a little bit different project than what the other one is. I kind of visited with them about that, and so I just, I try to find where the kids are interested, and, and not everybody's an artist, so I try to meet them where they're at, and that type of thing. Very soft spoken with the kids, um, he's just done a, a great job to the start of the year, and coming in very short notice and not having a lot of prep time, he's done a phenomenal job, and, um, we've already seen artwork in our hallways, so that's neat to see as well, from different age scales, so...
Uh, by the way, I've heard students say how great he is, and how fun they're having arts and...
I, that's true, you know, very impressive that he's already meeting him at different levels this early in the year, when he's brand new to the district.
Yeah, I, I asked him, I said, so what do you do with, with kiddos that art isn't there? He said, I find where they're at, and what they, their interests, and we work off of that, he said, everybody's got something. Just neat visiting with them, good conversations, so, done a good job so far. Um, NWA map testing, uh, we should be hopefully wrapping that up, except for maybe a few going into the following week, but I'd like to have that wrapped up prior to Homecoming week. From there, we're gonna use some of that data along with our ninety-five percent group to distinguish where our intervention groups are for our new curriculum. We'll also be using that to, for some goal-setting opportunities with classrooms, with individual kiddos, um, things like that, so... Hopefully have that wrapped up, and, um, for this round of it, anyway. Uh, plan book, I know we're continuing to use that across the, all levels, and I believe everybody has their link now updated on the website, and you can get to everybody's plan book from the website. One thing I need to put on myself this year is to continue to look at that a little bit more, and make sure that we have the materials on there that need to be on there for a daily schedule in the elementary, and we know things change, but to have a general idea of, of where we're at, so... And then in the elementary, we're just continuing to have conversations with the new curriculums. As mentioned, the ninety-five percent is that phonics core program, um, JK through five, and then the intervention piece of that is first grade through fifth grade. We will get rolling with the intervention piece in October. So right now, we're currently benchmarking kids and figuring out where the holes are, and, and get them in the proper, proper groups. Uh, self-studies, um, standards, I'll be honest with you, have been a little bit challenging to get rolling on with our elementary kiddos, and the, the site has not been real user-friendly. Um, we're working through it, though, there's, um, some content areas that teacher, that have teachers concerned a little bit, because they bring something up, and it, it goes against maybe what their other religion, or, um, you know, faith, maybe is taught in, so... So far, I haven't heard anything from parents, but I think one, this particular one I'm thinking of was in fourth grade. Parents did a great, or teachers did a great job of letting parents know, here are the areas that we're going to be covering. Some of the, the content might be a little different than what you're used to seeing. If you have any questions, please reach out. So they did a great job with that.
Right now, parents probably won't know what they're learning unless you go to plan book.
Right.
It's teacher, I'm sure, but I mean, so, parents have to be intentional about seeing that out, too.
Yep, so we'll continue to plug away on that, and then our, uh, pilot that we have in kindergarten and third grade, um, they're working through that. We have another check-in date here this Friday at ten and eleven for those two grade levels. I will say they are very hands-on in giving us and making sure that we are understanding everything, and, um, I, I have different ones set up from now until February, about every other Friday check-in with the company, so...
CKLA stands for what? I didn't know it was something, I, I was trying to put some letters, I didn't, that's fine.
I can get back to you on that.
I don't, I just thought...
It's a language difference.
Yeah, yeah, I got that part.
Yep. On the athletic director's side, um, obviously, we're full swing, volleyball, seventh and eighth, uh, fourteen kid, uh, students. Um, and in the ninth through twelve, there's thirty-eight student athletes. Football, seventh grade, there's eight, eighth grade, there's seventeen, um, and freshman through twelfth, we have forty-nine student athletes. In football, sorry, I don't know if I said that, but, and then cross-country, we have twenty-four kiddos that are running seventh through twelve.
That's a lot, for cross-country?
Yeah, our athletic numbers continue to be strong and everything like that, so... And then, uh, this is, Han did a great job of recapping Homecoming a little bit, um, Coronation Sunday is September fourteenth. With that, they'll do the Fan Fest and all that fun stuff, uh...
Start Sunday.
Start Sunday, so...
Can you get burgers, support those, Bob?
Yep.
Yeah, and Fan Fest, we're doing some new things this year, having like businesses come, like a community fest, it's not just like the district putting it on, it's community too, so... Alright, uh, Ellen, you want to report on business management right now?
I don't have the annual report, but we already talked about that, um, twenty-five, twenty-six budget levies, that was printed in the minutes, like, last month, but I did, um, did I ask me to put the spreadsheet of, like, the budget calculations? That's one that's all colored in there, so it's last year's stuff, and this year's...
Where we settled that?
And some of that's in red, that's the, um, is it over occupied? I can't remember.
Utilities.
Utilities, sorry, utilities, um, and, uh, we don't have those, I don't know, numbers yet, so...
Without M or M O O.
Mobile, yeah.
There you go. Yeah, it was really decent coffee for us to click, say, let it cool you bit for this year.
Fuel bid, um, I included that in it too, where we ended up, thank you, Joel, for working with them and getting that, you know, value, we ended up with, what, twenty cents a gallon?
There's something missing on it, but I, next year, you know, I told him to put this on it, but there should be an ending too, you know, from this date to this date.
I thought I'd have it on the top.
Uh, this is fifteenth through June, there is.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, there was something else on there we talked about, and it wasn't on this, and I thought it was ten cents, when it wasn't, very bad. Yeah, he was just going over some old things, but, but, um, yeah. Oh, that's what it was, we need, we can keep this twenty cent, you know, if this thing runs out, it's going to ten cents until you renew contracts, so, that's where I...
So we have to review this essentially before June thirty?
Yeah, we talked, yeah, and we talked about that as doing it earlier than what we can, because now it's like, we're starting school before we do them.
So it really needs to be done earlier.
So it really needs to be done earlier.
Put it on the June agenda, because June thirtieth is when this goes through, so if we approve something by the June meeting, that should get ahead of it.
So we really need to put the notices in the paper even prior to that, yeah.
Have you something built in the calendar?
Yeah, send it to us right now.
Yeah, and I don't know why, because like we have, I think it's in the annual meeting, um, agenda to approve putting out bids for fuel or, you know, putting the notice out for fuel bids, I don't know why we do that, because like we don't do it for anything else.
We don't do it for milliers, we don't do it for.
We don't do it for, like, we do our cop year, we don't do it for, I mean, the, uh, board doesn't approve going out for snow removal bids now, I, so I, I don't know why it's, I don't know why it has to be in there, honestly. I think we just go all for bids, but do it earlier in the.
Yeah, and have it as a line item, yeah.
In June, so.
Yeah, that's why.
How many dollars is that a year, was it about thirteen thousand, I think it was for something, somewhere in that.
You're talking about how much we.
Yeah, how many, how much you spent on fuel, I thought it was thirteen thousand.
I said that to you, I don't have that, I can't have that with me, but I know I did send you what we, um, just went through and what we used for fuel, the two different types of diesel fuel last year.
You have to figure out what you wanna do with that, if you wanna just send it to them, but it's something we'll talk about earlier than, uh, so I need.
Yeah, get it sent out, yeah, because we have to put it in the paper and then I did send it directly to Sines, because sometimes some of those businesses miss it in the newspaper and then ones that have always been, so usually I did send it to them. Awesome. Um, audit, ELO, ELO is doing the audit, they're gonna be onsite November third through fifth. And then I have to have, there's a whole bunch of documents that they have that need to be uploaded, so I need to do that by September fifteenth. Work off of, um, and I got the budget entered in SUI, so my, well, my goal is kind of decided today actually is to do the actual versus budget numbers, but I didn't get that done, so I'll plan on having that for next month, so I'll know that I have the numbers in the system. Where we're at, and then then update the five-year plan too.
Oh, yeah, good idea.
With where we ended up last year and see where we're going.
That's a good idea. Uh, when do you think the audit will be done? January, we have it on that agenda, if they're doing it in November, should be in the January timeframe, we're moving up to December to just review the audit findings and results.
Well, I guess whenever they have it done, yeah, whenever they have it done.
Whenever they have it done. Probably in January, I guess.
When was it last year?
It was later because of something, like it wasn't.
No, the year before it was a lot later because we couldn't find anybody, last year.
Did we do two of ones or no?
La, well, we didn't do.
We had it back to back.
Well, they were almost back to back because we didn't have anybody to do it, so it was way late when we started the audit, the first year that I started, but last year, it probably, it might have been in that January timeframe, I don't remember for sure.
Okay, any questions, other questions, Ellen? All right, Wade, report on NESC.
All right, um, I see that, um, eighteen by August, I attended by Zoom. I have to report, um, be straightforward there, I'm not any big changes in our financial, assistant director, uh, report. Talked about doing a CPI training, um, working on reducing crisis situations, uh, discussed assessing, um, or accessing the board packet on the new NESC website. Any other historical documents, kind of reviewed through the website. Director's report, um, she talked about, they're fully staffed in all areas to start the year, which is a nice place to be, obviously. Business manager, I completed their onsite audit. They helped me do employee orientation, this is the first time doing it, a little overwhelmed, and I was doing that. I've been in service on August fifteenth, uh, multiple trainings, um, talked, went through the faculty's curriculum training. Uh, the board of advisors, um, report from July, I guess they discussed behavior specialist position, needing sped forms. Talking about how the health districts that are going through compliance reviews. Uh, I guess in our discussion items, we've talked about, uh, which newspaper we're gonna use, um, I guess the Watertown Public Opinion, you know, it isn't really a local paper anymore, so I'll talk about using the Watertown term and what we have to do to get that changed. Set up a building committee, uh, we're still in the process of trying to figure out what we wanna do with the building for repairs and changes there. And then also set up a steering committee for this next year.
The steering committee does what?
Negotiations.
Could they have four staff?
Yeah.
Two. Thank you. All right, no questions, uh, next meeting on October thirteenth, we established, any other business? No, wow.
Good feedback, company.
You, you asked more questions than I did.
I guess, sorry. I totally know what I heard.
How the pillars are, you know, the.
Strategic plan.
Yeah, the CSI.
The paper?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was really nice. It's helpful to have it all, one of our hits. Awesome, well, I'll take a motion to a jury.
Motion. Sorry.
Who's sorry? Wade. Throw Wade down, all favors say aye. Oppose, motion carried.